Good evening, everyone. We're going to begin with the public hearing on a CDBG, Community Development Block Grant Application, and then we'll go into our regular board meeting. But at this time, I wanted to ask the board if there's a motion to open the public hearing on the 2018 CDBG grant submission.
Yes.
Okay, that was Deputy Mayor, followed by Trustee Schneider, all in favor. Public hearing is now open, and I'd like to turn it over to Ryan Luke of Crawford and Associates, our engineering firm, to tell us a little bit about the idea we're thinking to submit for. Good evening.
I'm sorry, is this the board meeting?
It is, yeah, please. There's an agenda on the corner of the table here.
And a sign and chief.
And there's a sign and chief. And it's just saying, we're starting with a little public hearing on a project that we're about to get told about here by this gentleman, and then we'll go into the regular meeting.
So as Mayor Curtis has said, the Dutchess County has a community development block grant, and for this year's submission, working with the mayor, we've located seven locations throughout the village to install new crosswalks. And that's part of the list of priorities currently with Dutchess County, is new crosswalks and pedestrian access. And we located five locations throughout the village. There's no specific order to any of these, but one would be at Clay Hill Road, another one would just be on the bridge, so the west side of the bridge, another one would be on Pine, from North Pine Street, or North Road and Pine Street, fourth one would be on Broadway and Pine Street, and the last one would be on Broadway connecting to Woods Road. Currently, there's no crosswalks there now. The crosses we're proposing would be similar to ones that are in the village center here, maybe the standard blacktop, they'd be colored, the red brick with a white outline. On the handouts I've given in here, I gave two examples, they can be a standard, just normal looking brick, or they can be different, they make different designs, and different stencils can be used for minimal changes in the cost. These five crosswalks would fit within the $100,000 grant opportunity. So it would be a good opportunity to connect a number of locations throughout the village with new pedestrian access.
Great, thank you, Ryan. So, we know we have a lot of people walking around, and we're always trying to encourage that, we've done a lot of work on our sidewalks, and there are places where people are trying to cross, particularly Broadway currently, and without a crosswalk, obviously, it's not as safe or easy or pleasant. So right in front of this building is a perfect example, where we have so many children at the park and the library, and people trying to cross here, and certainly, everyone who does the Tivoli Loop is having that same issue down by, where Woods Road lands on Broadway. So, that's the idea, and if the public has any questions or comments on this project as a grant submission, we're eager to hear them.
And also, I just want to add that because this is a CDBG hearing, you're asking for comments on any projects that the public would like to propose for you to consider, not just this one.
Correct. Trustees, any questions? I mean, we'll fill some time and let people think.
This looks like a good project for any number of reasons, safety primarily.
And the CDB program, CDBG program's been pretty, Tivoli's been pretty successful with that, so in recent years, we've won for improvements to the park, 2011, 2013 for about nine hundred via sidewalk, and then 15 and 17 for work on Pine Street. So, we tend to be successful every year or other years.
Well, I mean, this proposal kind of finishes a couple of things. The work that we've done on the sidewalk on the north side of Broadway to the east of the bridge will then be able to turn across, so it gives pedestrians away from Clay Hill. Yeah. Very good.
Good evening, Pete.
Hello.
Hi, Pete.
We're in the middle of a public hearing, if you want to comment on the crosswalk project, have a look at this map, or any other project. So, the same grant program that we've been getting, the work on Pine Street, we're doing another application this fall, and this was one idea we had, to do crosswalks at this very site.
Need anything else from me? I think it's a good idea.
We have a piece of plastic.
Just give another minute or two, in case for any other public comments.
When does the Pine Street sidewalk start?
So, we're shooting at that work break ground in early spring, I think.
Yes, hopefully to bid winter for start of next year.
Yep, and that is, again, from about behind the bakery parking lot, eastward, that whole sidewalk, number of aprons, drainage throughout that area, and then it would be really nice if we had a nice crosswalk shooting off that beautiful sidewalk, new sidewalk over to North Road there.
And one is out front here, right?
Yep.
For High Street.
Yep, right in front of this building.
Yeah, that's a good idea.
So, any other public comment on a 2018 CDBG submission, either this crosswalk idea or any other idea? Seeing none, is there a motion to close the public hearing? So move. Is there a second?
Second.
That was Murphy, followed by Ezraudi, all in favor?
Aye.
Thanks, Ryan, for coming in and showing us that. We'll put the grant package together, and I know that there's, this year, there's a different, there's like a pre-submission hurdle that is different than last year, right?
Yeah, Don was talking to me about it.
Right. Yeah, we should be on schedule, so that pre-submission, I believe, is October 5th, and then the total grant submission is the 19th, so.
Yep.
Great. All right, thank you, Ryan, and thank you, Crawford.
Thank you.
And thank you for the public, who were here for that public hearing.
Have a great evening.
Take care, bye-bye. Okay, with that out of the way, it's time to come to order for the September 2018 Meeting of the Village Tivoli Board of Trustees. I appreciate it if you would rise and join me for the pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much. It is 7:10 PM, and we will begin, please, with a village clerk's report. Clerk Bruno.
The past month, there were 395 tags, trash tags that were sold. Deputy Clerk attended and had noticed the public for a hearing for CBA, and two payrolls were processed.
Thank you very much. So, moving on to approval of the minutes, we have the August 15th and the August 12th. In the packet, I think we've got one of the, they're both labeled August 15th in the packet, so let's just be clear that 12th was the, we have a regular board meeting, then we have a special board meeting minutes. So that should be, I think, September and August 15th, right?
Yeah, it should be September 12th.
September 12th, that's where it is, okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I think in my brush.
Yes, well, you're also doing the mayor a favor by typing those up, so I appreciate it, I'll take the blame for that one. All right, so trustees, we have the August 15th regular board minutes and the workshop meeting minutes from September 12th, in which we set the public hearing that just occurred. Is there a motion to approve both sets of minutes?
So.
That was Trustee Ezraudi, seconded by Trustee Schneider. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All right, minutes are approved, moving on to Treasurer's Report. I want to thank Treasurer Day for her work. Okay, out of the general funds this month, $49,923.25, out of the water fund, $11,607.71, out of the sewer fund, $5,450, and out of the expendable trust, $119.40, for a grand total of $67,100.36. Is there a motion to accept the Treasurer's Report? That was the Deputy Mayor, followed by Trustee Murphy. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Treasurer's Report is accepted. Is there a motion to pay the bills?
Some will.
That was eagerly by Schneider and Ezraudi. All in favor?
Aye.
The bills are going to be paid, that's a good thing. Moving on to a zoning report, Trustee Ezraudi, please.
Yes, well, John Fitton has been busy this month. He's issued five building permits, performed five building inspections, submitted them, received them, and investigated eight complaints, issued six zoning violations for failure to remove garbage cans from sidewalks and hide grass. These are appearance tickets, so these individuals will have to go to the court. Undertaken one municipal search, and no fire inspections were scheduled.
Thank you, Trustee Ezraudi. So now we come to the point when we open the floor for public comment on agenda items only, and usually I'll give a little rundown, so we have some budget modifications, that's usually not a very big deal, it's housekeeping, raising and lowering budget lines as we go through the year. But we do have some more interesting things, like a resolution authorizing the transfer ownership and management of the village's water system and sewer system to the Dutchess County Water and Wastewater Authority. Now, I think, as everyone in this village knows, this is something that we've been working on for about three years, quite heatedly in the last six months or so, and this, all that work comes down to this document, which allows the water authority to move this process forward, including drawing that district around the village so that they can charge and provide water and sewer services, a number of outstanding easements and surveys related to those that have to happen, and an awful lot of legal work to end up with the village able to completely and legally transfer these infrastructure and the operation of that infrastructure from village ownership to the DCWWA. We also are complying with a state mandate, a lawable one, which is to implement a sexual harassment policy. All public and private entities in New York State have to do this, I believe, by October 1st, is that right, Counsel?
6th, yeah.
October 6th, yeah. And lastly, I'll just go ahead and make my big announcement, but Tivoli won a $108,000 grant yesterday, which we're very excited about, so I want to be sure to tell you about that, and it is actually related to the water and sewer transfer. So, this is part of a county grant program, the municipal innovation grants, it's for ideas for making government work more leanly, more efficiently, if that involves sharing services or consolidation. So something like Tivoli transferring our water and sewer to the county water authority is, in a sense, the perfect program for this municipal innovation grant. And the budget estimates for what that's going to cost, the ratepayers of Tivoli, that's all of us, to do the transfer, it's about $216,000. That's the contractors and the surveys and the attorneys and all of that stuff, just to hand it over. Something we've been aware of and have heard from all of you since the beginning of this journey that we've been on is, you know, it's scary how much this is all going to cost, not just the transfer, but much more importantly, replacing all the water mains, building a new water tank, upgrading the wells and the sewer plant. And we have tried everything we can all along to keep these costs as low as possible, and winning these grants is a perfect, this grant is a perfect example of that. I'm so grateful that we were successful, because it's literally cutting in half that particular cost. So that's that announcement, but enough for me, if there's any public comment on these agenda items, we are happy to listen to.
Now, what's this whole water waste?
How much time you got? Any other comments, or?
There's some resolution authorizing the transfer, it's sort of like signing that contract when you're buying a house. You've got the basic agreement down, the terms, et cetera, and then you'll go, then we'll go into a period where we do a title search, right, and make sure that we define all of the properties that are actually being transferred.
That's well said.
So this is step three of four, there are some other steps.
Right, and the closing is, we're guessing eight months, or eight to 12 months away, possibly, right? So it's important to get this started, because our pipes aren't getting any younger, obviously.
And it's a cute step, because it means we're all serious.
Yes. Any other public comment on agenda items? And then, of course, we have a general public comment period at the end of the meeting. All right, seeing none, we'll dive into business. Trustees, we'll begin with these budget modifications, we went over them in the workshop. I want to thank the clerk and treasurer for sort of getting these lined up, for it was truly the budget officer to finalize. And is there a motion to resolve these budget modifications? That's Trustee Murphy, is there a second?
Second.
That was Trustee Schneider. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Resolution authorizing transfer ownership and management of the village's water system and sewer system to the Dutchess County Water and Wastewater Authority. Counsel, should I read any part of this, or is it pretty clear? Is there anything you want for the record, me to be sure to hit on?
It's always useful to hit on a few important points, but if we, if we read the, at least read the resolution part, I guess the main thing is that...
There are a number of whereas's.
There are a number of whereas's, but they're really to recite the process that we've gone through, to consider this approval, including the evaluations and the studies that were done, the public meetings, the secret determinations that the board went through.
Okay, I'll jump through the whereas's and then read the result in its entirety. So obviously, the village Tivoli is the owner of the water and sewer systems, and in 2015, we won our, a grant from this same grant program, the municipal innovation grant program, to do the evaluation. That was bringing in the engineer to look at the hardware, look at the infrastructure, and identify the improvements that were needed, and the triage of their severity, and also their costs. That resulted in the water and wastewater facilities evaluations in April of 2017. Those were shared at length and broadly with the public. We hosted three public meetings in 2017, showing the results of those facility studies. There was a lot of public comment. We declared ourselves lead agency in a type-one action with respect to the transfer. We reviewed and revised an environmental assessment form and the coastal assessment form, all part of the secret process, and...
Then we just recite that the authority for entering an agreement like this isn't a public authorities law that created the Dutchess County Water and Wastewater Authority for just this kind of purpose, to take over public water supply and public wastewater systems, to operate them for the benefit of the public.
Correct. And so, "Whereas the members of the village board have reviewed the facility studied and have fully considered the results thereof and the opinions presented, now therefore be it resolved by the village Board of Trustees of the village of Tivoli as follows. One, the transfer agreement is hereby approved. Two, the mayor, or in his absence or unavailability, the deputy mayor is duly authorized to execute and deliver the transfer agreement in substantially the form on file with the clerk, with such changes as shall not materially affect the substance thereof, and which shall be consistent with the terms of this resolution. Three, the officers, employees, and agents of the village are hereby authorized and directed for, and in the name of the village, to do all acts and things necessary, or in the opinion of the officer, employee, or agent acting, desirable and proper, to affect the purposes of the foregoing resolution. And fourthly, the resolution shall take effect immediately." That said, is there a motion to adopt the resolution authorizing transfer in ownership and management of the water and sewer systems to the DCWWA?
I move.
That was Deputy Mayor Major. Is there a second?
Second.
Trustee Ezraudi. Roll call vote, Deputy Mayor Major.
Aye.
Trustee Ezraudi.
Aye.
Trustee Murphy.
Aye.
Trustee Schneider.
Aye.
And I also vote aye. Resolution passes unanimously.
Feels like we have to show a name.
This is a landmark, certainly, on the journey that we've been on, so a lot of work is going into it, so thank you to everyone involved, all the residents who came and participated with us on this really big decision, and I definitely want to thank my colleagues on the board, and I would include the clerk, who had the pleasure of taking minutes on all of those here. And Panda as well, for, you know, providing a great document that was definitely used by a lot of people who didn't make the meetings, watched it on Panda, to help this process be open and robust. Moving on to the next agenda item, resolution adopting a sexual harassment policy for the village of Tivoli. Whereas pursuant to New York State Labor Law, the New York State Division of Human Rights has produced a model sexual harassment prevention policy, and pursuant to New York State Labor Law, every employer within the state shall adopt the model sexual harassment prevention policy promulgated pursuant to Labor Law to establish the sexual harassment prevention policy to prevent sexual harassment that equals or exceeds the minimum standards provided by the model sexual harassment prevention policy. So, the village board trustees would resolve to adopt the sexual harassment policy for the village and its employees in the form on file with the village clerk. A written copy of this policy shall be provided to all employees on or before October 6, 2018, and the mayor or other officers are hereby authorized and directed to do all acts and things required and provided by the sexual harassment policy, and the resolution would take effect immediately. Is there a motion to adopt the sexual harassment policy for the village of Tivoli?
So moved.
That was Trustee Schneider, is there a second?
Second.
Trustee Murphy. Roll call vote, Deputy Mayor Major.
Aye.
Trustee Ezraudi.
Aye.
Trustee Murphy.
Aye.
Trustee Schneider.
Aye.
And I also vote aye. And the resolution is adopted unanimously, thank you very much. And lastly, as I already said, we won $108,000 yesterday, so we definitely want to thank County Executive and Dutchess County Legislature, in particular, our representative, legislator Christopher Munn, all the Dutchess County staff, and I also want to congratulate our fellow municipalities, there are quite a few winners in this program, and interestingly, and maybe a bit more interesting for us, the village of Rhinebeck, our friends in the village of Rhinebeck, just won an $87,750 grant to do an evaluation of transferring water and sewer systems to the DCWWA. This is the same...
feasibility study.
Same document, same step that Tivoli did in 2015 through 17, so congratulations to them. And I'll just read the announcement from the County Executive, Marcus Momonaro. Water and wastewater transfer of ownership, award $108,000 awarded municipality, village of Tivoli, in partnership with the Dutchess County Water and Wastewater Authority. Project description, implement transfer of ownership, which will include surveying to resolve property issues, legal expenses to create closing documents, and address potential parkland alienation, purchase of easements for access to existing infrastructure, engineering expenses for the creation of county sewer and water districts, and construction of system improvements requiring immediate attention. Congratulations to Tivoli, and all the users of the system. That concludes regular business. The next board meeting will be held on Wednesday, October 17th, here at 7:00 PM in this room, preceded by a public workshop at 6:00 PM in the mayor's office, and we will have a regular workshop on October 10th, 2018, at 7:00 PM. We'll move on now to committee reports, Trustee Ezraudi, please.
Okay, I move. We're off with Tivoli's famous festival, this street painting festival, which, God willing and the creek don't rise, will take place on September 29th, which is a week from this Saturday. We have, we pursued a different process this year, we like to find a way to register squares, so that people get the squares that they want, but so that also people don't take squares and then not use them. So, this time, we set aside a certain number of squares that would be reserved ahead of time, we've hit that mark. So, the additional squares will be released Saturday morning. If you've already submitted an application that didn't go into reserving a square, it'll be there for you to pick up and find it. So, every time, there's another little innovation, and we'll see if that will help. We've also identified some good artists and invited them to come, and tried to find them the space that they would particularly like, including Sabra, who is there every year, her mother having started the festival.
And Sabra's going to do a demonstration this Saturday, correct? Are you going to give explanation on that?
Yeah, and that's, I believe, going to take place in the...
It's going to be under the pavilion this Saturday.
Yeah.
I'm not sure of the exact hour.
11 o'clock.
11 o'clock.
11 o'clock, yeah. And it's an interesting process, she's done this before, but she will tell you how to take your little tiny drawing and blow it up to the size of an eight-by-eight floor, eight-by-eight square, and make it look right. She'll tell you how to lay it out on a piece of paper and poke holes in it, and dribble chalk so that it gets transferred, she'll tell you how to rub the chalk so that you get muted colors and fill in the gaps. So, she's been doing it for a while, and she's got all the techniques.
Yeah, and that will go on whether it rains or not, because it's under the pavilion, unlike the festival itself.
Right.
Actually, that technique of poking the holes and tamping with the charcoal, that's the original word cartoon, and that's how Michelangelo got the images drawn on the Sistine ceiling, it's usually used in fresco.
That's going to tell an artist something, and he'll...
So that's Michelangelo's technique, and all those fresco folks from back then, it's the same technique that Sabra uses to get it on Broadway.
So, we are always looking for help for this festival, so if you are available Saturday morning and like to mix paint, like to paint streets, we're going to have Anna Bulicki, who did this last year, to help us lay out those squares in the right places, so that they match up to where you expect your square to be. And we need, we need just a massing of people, we've got, I think, 10 bins that we can put paint in, we've got 14 rollers, and we've got a lot of paint, so if you could come and help with that aspect, it's terrific. We've got some experienced people on the registration desk, but sometimes it requires a little patience to let that happen, but come early, and we'll make sure you get a square.
What time do you want volunteers?
Pardon?
What time would you like volunteers there?
For the actual painting of the street?
Yeah.
Between 7:30 and 8:00. Don't come before sunrise. Robert McKeon usually does that, and he milks it the rest of us, but you really don't have to be there before you can see the street.
And we probably have some things people should know about parking on Broadway a couple days before the festival, right? Because we have the street swept at one point.
Right.
And also, don't park there overnight, I mean, there will be signs out, but every year, there are one or two or three unfortunate folks who get towed in the morning, and we'd love to not do that, so don't park there that night.
The gentleman from H&amp;M Chewing will be there early, so he's usually pretty nice about walking up and down the street and trying to find the location of the person who owns the blue Ford, but, you know, if he doesn't find you, it's gone, and you're going to have to pay him to get it back, so. Okay, now I have another report, my favorite report, which is the water report, and the ball-up well wasn't used much, nor was 2PW and 5PW wasn't used at all. All the other wells were pumping water at the expected levels, and the water tower was held to a high level. The critical issue is, how much rain did we get in August? And I'm going to make this easier, I'm going to give you three choices. Average rainfall? Below-average rainfall? Over double-average rainfall for the month? Over double! Right! Finally, seven!
It was really showing, really coming to play this one, thank you.
7.6 inches. And we did have one water main break, that was on Montgomery Street on the Sixth of Oz.
Still happening. Thank you, Trustee Ezraudi. Trustee Schneider, please.
Absolutely. So, for the month of August, the village of Tivoli Justice Court report... So for the month of August, the village of Tivoli Justice Court report, a total of one charge was received and eight charges were disposed. $685 was collected and remitted to the state comptroller.
Thank you, trustee Schneider. Trustee Murphy.
Last month that I talked about the, we were still in the midst of the summer rec program.
We were.
Yeah.
So we ended up the week, the program fantastic. We had a total of 41 children signed up this year. The second week was a bigger week with 37. So I was very happy that I went and scrambled at the last minute and hired a fourth counselor. With that said, I'd like to give a good shout out to our counselors, Ari, Anna, Kyle, and Anna Blessy as well, who seems to be all around the village, helping out. Yeah, and they added a lot to the program. The kids fell in love with one or another of them. They were great and helped, you know, create relationships between the children in the village. And I also like to give a shout out and a thank to the library for their help, CATS Band. We were able to bring the kids on the American Legion. And also to deputy clerk, I mean clerk Bruno for helping with the registration and taking all the money. Thank you. And upcoming for the children in the village as well, I'm working on, and I know it's gonna break some hearts, is that I'm thinking the karaoke was fun for the first year, the second year was good too, but I think we might change it up this year for Halloween. And I'm working with the library on possibly doing a movie, Halloween movie for the kids, so. More information to come, so, thank you.
There will be a village sponsored with the library activity for children around Halloween and more details to come.
Yeah.
Thank you, trustee Murphy. Deputy Mayor, major, who woke up, what, on the other coast of the US?
On the other coast.
So right? Thanks for joining us.
Just in time to tell me about fabulous things going on all over. Actually, I wanted to say surpassingly thanks to you and trustee Ezraudi for stealing the one thing that I pulled out as the cool library.
You're welcome. You won the water inch rainfall thing, so.
I did, yes, I like to leave it that, I suppose. But yeah, so come on Saturday and pregame for street painting will save you 11 o'clock in the pavilion. At Clermont, they're having an event on Saturday, October 13th. It's a Victorian nutting party. Oh, I know what a nutting party is. So it's gonna be, October 13th, 1:00 PM. It's gonna start with a tree identification hike. And then there will be nut gathering and processing, followed by hot drinks and nutty snacks. So what could be better? And then the next day, there's an autumn bird walk, October 4th, at 8:30 in the morning. What I really want to talk about though is the, I guess the fourth iteration of the Tivoli Barred Community Publik Dinner, which is gonna be the 28th, Friday, the 28th, from 6:00 to 8:00. And this is where you can come and carve up for street painting the next day, right?
Yeah.
Fill your belly and, you know, get to know your neighbors, bring some food. There will be, there will be live music and it's always a lot of fun up here on the third floor. I guess in terms of nature, boat launch is still out, the ticks are still out, the poison ivy is still out, but at least it's turning red, so, that's all I got.
Thank you, deputy mayor. I have just a few things. I did get the final tonnage on our cleanup day, it was 12.4 tons. And I'm pleased to say, yes, it's a lot, lot to remove from the village.
It isn't here, yeah.
And the numbers were that the final bill came in at $2,800 and we collected 1,000 in fees, which is closer to sort of what I was hoping with my little committee who helped me out to sort of do the first year. With those numbers, we will definitely be doing this again next year. I can think of no other thing, not even the prompt cleanup of the 27 inches of snow that we got on March 14, 15, the other year. No thing in this village, since I've been on the board in 2011, have more people said thank you for it, so.
Yeah.
We listened, we're gonna do it again.
Yeah.
It's interesting, so.
It's hard to get rid of that stuff.
Yeah, and, you know, we might tweak the fees a little bit and try and, you know, have the numbers line up better, but I'd say for a first outing after, you know, decades of not providing any service like this, this was a huge success. And I definitely want to thank Glenn Baker and Leslie Baker and our other volunteers who helped pull that off. They were very patient and, but that's a perfect example of residents coming in here, getting our attention, telling us what they think this village needs and working with us. And we need your help to, to pull things off. So it was really their, their hard work that made it happen. And we are going to do some sort of brush service in the spring. I'm not sure what form that's gonna take, but I know, I'm very aware that is another service that residents have been crying out for, for a long time. We're gonna figure out whether that is curbside pickup or bring your brush to some centralized location. I'm not sure yet, but we've got, we've got months to go before spring, so sorry to tell you. But there will be some kind of brush event, so stay tuned for that. Last Saturday, I was joined by trustees Ezraudi and Schneider as we marched with our friends in Red Hook in the hardscrabble day parade. It was really fabulous and congratulations to Mayor Blundell and trustee Norris and the village board there and everyone, clerk McCann, who pull off that event. It was, it was a lot of fun and a great, great band, great music. A lot of people at the band later at night and the weather couldn't have been better. It was like a July evening, it was really great, so, always fun. We're having some work done here at village hall. The front doors are being redone inside and out. You will notice they've got some scraping and spackle on them right now. He's sort of halfway through, but they should be done next week. And that, that was all paid for by a generous donation from a Tivoli resident. And just today, we received, yet to be unboxed, our new water fountain for downstairs, replacing the fountain that's been broken for an embarrassingly long time here in this building. But we've got a top of the line, very nice water fountain that we will have installed as soon as we can. And I just want to remind residents that we are served by the Dutchess County Sheriff's deputies and we are enforcing all our local laws now and always. And if you see anything or disturbed, you know, late night noise or anything suspicious or, you know, any other complaint, don't hesitate to call them. It's 486-3800, 845-486-3800. And let them know what, what they can do for you because they, they work for us and do a good job at it, I might add. And lastly, we are beginning plans for Tivoli Community Day 2019, which as I've been saying, if you've heard, it's gonna be a little different because unlike the last four years, next year happens to be the centennial of the Tivoli Fire Company and the centennial of the Harris Smith Post of the American Legion. So I don't think we can have our typical little under the pavilion thing. We are forming a committee, I'm really letting the fire company take the lead on this. Tommy's not here tonight, but I know they've already started planning. And I'm looking for volunteers who want to serve on a committee all year, probably once a month, to help pull this off. And it's, we're gonna try and give it a big party like it deserves, so. One thing I can tell you is that rather than being in early August, as our last four Tivoli days have been, this is gonna be on Labor Day weekend, it's gonna be the Saturday of Labor Day, so. The short answer, so we have Sunday and Monday to recover. Hopefully that'll be the reason, or, or pick up anyway, clean up. And, you know, we are shooting to have a parade on Broadway, we are shooting to have events all day. Ideas of Tivoli days past, which are on the table, include a, a morning foot race, float contest in the parade, and then events at the park, you know, all day and into the evening. And maybe fireworks. A lot of this is gonna depend on community support and, in terms of donations and then see what the fire department can, can work up. But they and, and the village are geared up to, to have a big party next year. So we hope folks will pitch in. And if you want to be on that committee, just contact me, I'd be happy to put you on there. And hopefully we can work together to, to pull it off. And that will be good rehearsal for 2022.
Sesquicentennial!
Sesquicentennial, because we're gonna have to have another big party, probably even bigger for that, which is the 150th of the incorporation of the village, so. We're gonna try and step it up here on the Tivoli celebrations, so. With, with 18 years of street painting, we should, we're all, we got the idea of what to do, so. So that's Tivoli Day 2019. Please volunteer for this committee if you're interested. Any other comments from the board before we open the floor to public comment? And if you think of something, you can chime in afterwards, but right now we'd like to open the floor to the public for comment on any topic you choose.
I'm ready for street paint.
Ready for street paint?
Yeah.
Thank you, Pete.
That's it.
That's it?
Everybody have a good summer?
It was, it was a good summer, it was, we were working hard this summer for sure with the water sewer stuff. But we, we were out, Pete's on our tree committee and we did a survey of our trees that have been in recently. Some are doing better than others, some are doing quite well, some, we've talked about what needs to be done.
A little tender loving care.
Yes, yes. But keep an eye on things, which is great and we appreciate your service on that committee. Anything you'd like to address the board about?
Not particularly. I, I would like to get that number and write it down for the police. Sometimes I, we have a little noise disturbance down the road. And we had one recently, the police showed up at the house at 4:00 in the morning and it was the wrong house, it was our house, but that was not the right house. They don't know, they didn't know where the numbers were, a little confused.
So, yeah, and, and you can get it to...
Yeah.
486-3800. And, you know, we have had, I believe, close to eight noise tickets written in the last three weeks around the...
Well, this was, I think, a car, there was an incident with a car and they came to our house. They didn't, they didn't understand how the street numbers went.
I'm sorry, that didn't work out, but I hope it doesn't discourage you from calling again.
Oh, no, no. But we get other oddball noise disturbances and other things down there.
Yeah. From 10:00 PM to 7:00 AM, it's quite, quiet time in Tivoli according to the noise law, we give them forceback, so.
Yeah, that's good enough, because sometimes it isn't supplied.
It's always work, it doesn't happen on its own, for sure. Anything else or other comments from the floor? Thank you all for being here and 7:45, is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Trustee Murphy, is there a second?
Thanks.
So moved.
You can't. Deputy Mayor, major, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thanks, folks.